Yeah, I probably would.
Did you?
I didn't hear.
I don't have that on the sound along or not, did you?
Nobody get it?
He is, yeah.
Nobody?
Thank you. Yeah. That's good to hear, yeah. No, I think he's got his crap together. He just doesn't know quite exactly what he wants to do. And I think he's been underemployed in the Air Force. And he's got a little, I always tell him, he thinks, well, no one's going to want to hire me. You've got to stop that. You're a captain in the Air Force. You've been doing some cool things. You went to the desert for six months. You're going to be fine. You've got to raise yourself.
To order, will the clerk please note those in attendance?
All will be noted.
Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and indivisible in justice. For all.
All right. To entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting on August 26, 2025.
Don't move.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes are approved.
I would like to abstain from that vote. I wasn't here.
Let the record reflect one abstention. Item three, adoption of the agenda to entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Don't move.
A motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda. Item four, consent agenda to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda is approved. All right. Item five, visitors and presentations. We have a Constitution Week proclamation. As you know, we only do a handful of proclamations, and I look forward to doing this one. So, without further ado, I will read the proclamation for Constitution Week. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardians of our liberties embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule of law. Whereas September 17, 2025 marks the 238th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America. Whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebration which will commemorate the occasion. Whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States, designating September 17 through the 23 as Constitution Week. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Dan Lewis Smith, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of White Bear Lake, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim September 17 through the 23 as Constitution Week and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. Very good. Thank you. All right. Moving on to item six, public hearings. We have nothing scheduled. Item seven, unfinished business, nothing scheduled. Item eight, a 2026 preliminary budget and tax levy. Ms. Kinzvater, whenever you're ready.
Mr. Mayor, I will take this one.
Or Ms. Crawford.
Okay. So tonight, we are going to talk about the 2026 preliminary budget and tax levy. We're going to talk about the 26 budget schedule, strategic plan alignment, fund balance analysis, preliminary budget and tax levy, and then estimated tax levy impacts. Where we are at in the process right now, it's September 9. So you are considering the preliminary tax levy and establishing the truth and taxation hearing date, which is for in December. After this, the city council will hold a work session October 21 to review and discuss budgets for special revenue funds, enterprise funds, and a draft fee schedule. And then on December 9, the city council will hold the truth and taxation hearing, adopt the final tax levy, 25 revised budget, and final 2026 budget. So, an important step in our long-range planning process is ensuring both our capital improvement plan, financial management plan, and annual budget align with core strategies the city council and city leadership team identified in the 2024 strategic plan, which are a safe and welcoming community, maintain small-town feel, engaged community, responsive leadership, complete community, support redevelopment to revitalize local economy and business districts, excellent services and values, and dedicated and supportive, supported city staff. And so several of the strategic plans, goals, and objectives relate to financial planning and capital improvements on our operational budget. And so just, I'm not going to read all of them, but they're listed on the screen. And so staff has prepared a budget which aligns with the strategic plan and needs of the community. Two things that we look at when analyzing, well, when preparing our annual budget requires analysis of two fund balance-related percentages. And so the first one is the state auditor recommendation of keeping a minimum of five months' operating costs, or 42%, on hand and accessible over, to cover unanticipated costs. The fund balance projected for December 31, 2025 covers 47.13%. And I'll get into this in a later slide, but forecasting ahead, using some fund balance for the 2026 operating budget at the end of '27, or at the end of '26, would leave 43% of estimated 2027 expenditures. The second, fund balance analysis, is tracking the fund balance to ensure funds are available to pay claims in the first half of each year. We have an anticipated fund balance for December 31, '25 at 75%. And then again, conservatively projecting the use of fund balance in 2026 calculates about 64.5% to cover 2027 projected revenue. The 2026 preliminary budget, some notable, or the notable revenue changes include franchise fee revenues are decreasing, non-business license and permit revenues are trending down with the completion of the school district facility projects and no new significant development projects planned, currently planned. Local government aid, or LGA, funds have been retained in the general fund to reduce the proposed tax levy increase. We, last year, I believe last year, received a DNR Shade Tree grant to assist with funding the removal of Emerald Ashford and tree replacement. That's been adjusted to match the planned use of funds. So that's shown in revenues and expenditures, but it is notable, so we're calling it out here. Ambulance revenues have increased, are projected to increase based on 2024 actual and 2025 year-to-date receipts, which is a good thing. And interest revenues have, are projected to increase based on current year's receipts. Notable expenditure changes include salary adjustments per the adopted pay plan and labor contracts, including benefit factors, a 3% cost of living adjustment. And just, please note, the Public Works labor contract is currently open for negotiations. Additional personnel, which I'll get to in an upcoming slide. Forestry management, so this is the DNR Shade Tree Emerald Ashford grant that was previously, or discussed in the slide previously. Highway 61 median maintenance and required additional safety measures in order to conduct that work. Website hosting and federal ADA compliance add-ons. That's related, again, to our website and a mandate that we must comply with. And then also mandate required Minnesota family leave program expenditures have been included with a 50-50 cost share between the city and its employees. So the pre-2026 preliminary levy reflects a 9.46, or $1.3 million increase over the 2025 levy. I will note, the city council held a work session, I think it was August 19, where staff presented a 9.97% levy increase, so that has been decreased since that time with the removal of the communications specialist position. So making up that 9.46% or $1.3 million, we have it broken down on the slide to just full transparency where that goes. So 6.84% of that increase is for general operations, which includes personnel and benefit expenses. Ms. Kinzvater could give you the exact breakdown, but about $600,000 of that $946,000 is for public safety personnel labor, previously approved labor agreements, which would mean then roughly $300-some thousand is the increase for other operation, or for operations and non-union personnel. 1.75% for debt service related to the 2025 street reconstruction project. That's our Division and 12th project that was just finished, as well as the equipment certificate for the replacement of a fire truck that we issued earlier this year. .27% for the public safety facility debt service, so it's just $37,000 more coming on the books from that previous project. And then .6% or $79,000 for one IT technician. I will note that two additional firefighter positions have also been included in the 2026 preliminary budget, but funding comes, there is no direct tax levy impact in '26 because we have redirected expense, funding expenditures from part-time personnel to full-time personnel. So, calling that out, but it is not a reason for the tax levy increase. So when we take a look at the estimated tax levy impacts, and these are estimates, but our taxable market value in White Bear Lake has grown by 3.31%. This is a little bit difficult to read on the screen, but it is included in your packet. So, and then the next, tax capacity has grown by 3.79%. Again, the total tax levy is growing by 9.46, but it is worth noting that the city, no city in the state sets values for homes. That's done by the county. And so if there were no change to market value of a property, that levy increase would truly feel like 5.76%. And then the city tax capacity rate will be at 32% under this budget. When we look at White Bear Lake compared to some surrounding communities, our revenue collection comparisons, this is where we fall. So this is a comparison of revenue per capita with comparable communities throughout the state, mainly in the metro area. This includes 26 preliminary levies of those other cities, which of course are subject to change. White Bear Lake has a greater population than some of these cities, yet a much smaller tax levy. This means that our per capita revenue collection is, again, at the bottom of the list here at $669. And then the next closest is Shoreview at 684, but their population is 27,000. It also is worth noting that in 2025, in 2024, and in 2023, we were also at the bottom of this list. When we take those same cities and just look at their tax levy, this chart shows five years of levy history for comparable cities, including estimate, or including their preliminary levy increases for '26. Again, you can see here on the screen that White Bear Lake remains right at the bottom with where we have historically been with these comparable communities. Although we are catching up, our proposed levy increase is still less than what New Brighton's was last year, and the same as what Shoreview's was in 2023. So when we look at White Bear Lake alone, if this pie chart, you could think of it as $1. And so where does, where does your property tax dollar go? And this is something that we always include in our newsletter. That'll be included in this Fall's newsletter. But several entities assess taxes to properties. And so for every tax dollar paid, approximately 22 cents of that dollar goes to the city of White Bear Lake. The other, you know, the remainder is then divided among Ramsey or Washington counties, the school district, other agencies such as Met Council, the mosquito control district, or watersheds and water management organizations. So we're in that blue, the blue section there, and that's 22 cents for every dollar of property taxes that someone pays is what the city would receive. And when, so going back here, when we just look at our budget, so just the blue section of the pie chart, where do your annual city property taxes go to White Bear Lake? So where does that 22 cents go? I recognize this is a little bit hard to read, so bear with me. But in 2025, the median home value in White Bear Lake for taxes payable next year is $349,000, which again, that is not set by the city, that is set by the county auditor. So next year, that median home value would pay $1,074.85 to the city for the entire year in its property tax payment. And so for that price, you know, that property owner receives exceptional quality of life in White Bear Lake, in my opinion, of course, and 24/7 police access, 24/7 fire and EMS, street lighting, snow plowing, city publications, access to city staff and elected officials, parks, and recreation services. So this pie chart shows how our budget delineates out amongst public safety and general government and whatnot. So, well over, I want to say it's about 60% of our budget is related to public safety. So tonight's, staff's recommendation tonight is that the city council adopt the attached resolution in your packet approving the tax levy as presented and setting the truth and taxation hearing for December 9 at 7:00 PM here in this room at City Hall. The 2026 preliminary levy must be set no later than the September 23 city council meeting. So while you don't have to set it tonight, you do have to set it by September 23 because we do have to certify it to the counties by September 30. And I know council knows this, but just for those who are watching, the city council may reduce the levy before final adoption in December, but you may not, the city council may not increase it at that time. So with that, Mayor and council, I will, the Finance Director and I will stand for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford. I'll just first say thank you to Ms. Kinzvater, our city manager, and all the other city staff that put a lot of time and effort into this. I think we had a really good work session last month, a good vibrant debate, and I think the consensus was probably with the same as our average resident, which is provide the best services as frugally as possible. And I think you've delivered another budget that effectively does that. So I don't have any fundamental qualms with this. As you indicated, Ms. Crawford, this is not adopting the budget or the levy tonight. It's setting the ceiling, and we'll have some further discussions. But I do want to compliment you on sharpening your pencils and have it come down about a half a percentage since the work session. So I'm sure others in the council will have a thought or two. But overall, I don't have any glaring objections or issues with this. So council, questions or comments for Ms. Crawford? Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We could go back to the slide on paid family leave. Just a couple of questions on the paid family leave. The first one is just, I'm assuming that we're going to split the cost between city employees, so the employees pay half the tax. So the second question is, have we looked at alternatives to being in the state paid family leave program? I've actually been surprised at how many businesses I'm running across around the state that are going to, because you don't have to participate in the state's plan if you can jump through the hoops, meet the requirements that the state plan is providing for your employees. So more businesses than I thought would do this are doing this. That's the experience in other states, too. Upwards like almost 30% of businesses may do it themselves. And so I wonder if the League of Minnesota Cities or anybody's looking at this. And I actually heard this week that Hennepin County might be looking into doing it on their own. And the business owner I've been talking to, they're going to do it cheaper than the .88 or whatever the tax is at the moment, cheaper than the cost, so we can actually save money if we can, I don't know if the league's doing anything on this, or if we're all just like, oh, we're just going to go into the state program.
Mayor, Councilmember Walsh, thank you for that statement and question. I want to say that I need to do some digging and get back to you. But what I do know is, from my understanding, that we have the option to go with the state-administered program or go through a private broker. We are choosing to go through a private broker because it is cheaper. But we don't have an option to not be part of PFMLA. So that's what I know, but I can do some further digging and get back to you.
Yeah, I'm a little confused because if we do the broker, if we go through the broker thing, then we're not, we shouldn't be subject to the tax. So maybe that's not the plan. I guess that's not on the slide. We're going to split the cost with employees 50-50. So that's interesting, I guess, maybe. So we're already doing that. We're already, we're opting out of the state program then, and the tax then. So are we saving money? Is it, I guess, how do we know? We'd have to, well, I guess you could tell. What's, every employee times .88 or whatever it is, is what the cost of the state's going to be. Are we saving money? Is it cheaper?
If I could do some digging and get back to you, because I don't want to misspeak and...
Yeah, a little more detail on that'd be great in the next, you know, month or so, as we lead up to the final vote. Thank you.
Councilmember Edberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, this is, I wasn't aware of the opportunity for a broker. I was assuming that when we opted out, there would be an opportunity for self-insurance. In other words, we would agree to set aside money out of our operating budgets over time rather than paying into the state-administered fund. So if, when you do the research, if you could get a sense of what the distinctions might be and what the options are. I am only skin-deep knowledgeable about how this is going to be implemented. So if it's self-administered, if it's through a third party but that is not the state, or a state, I think are the three options that I was assuming there might be. But anyway, if you could address that, I'd welcome that, too.
Yeah. I will do some more digging and get the council some additional information on all that. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just going to maybe throw that out there. I look forward to getting the research, but from what I've looked into this, it's not quite as simple as an outright opt-out. And that was my understanding, too, up until literally this week. And it looks like it really more is opt-out for the administration, but the funds still end up flowing into the state. So it's not as cut and dry as a opt-out and go private. But if I'm wrong on that, or if there is an option, I think that's what the council's saying, let's look into. So, look forward to that research. All right. Any other questions on the preliminary budget? Comments? All right. Very good. We have a resolution before us to adopt the preliminary tax levy. I'd entertain a motion to approve that resolution.
Don't move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The resolution is adopted. All right. Item 8B, United States Post Office Potential Retail Relocation Letter of Opposition. Ms. Crawford, are you taking this?
I am, Mayor. So the United States Postal Service recently mailed over 10,000 postcards to customers within the 55110 ZIP code to inform them of their proposal to relocate retail services from Fifth Street to another location within two miles, a radius, within a two-mile radius, and asked for feedback, for public feedback. City staff and I have received an overwhelming amount of community feedback in opposition of that potential relocation. The post office has been conveniently located in downtown White Bear Lake since the 1930s. It was located previously on Third Street in a couple of different locations prior to the construction of its current location in about 1976. The current location serves as a retail hub for customers with post office boxes, retail counter, drive-up, a drop box, and services in addition to serving as a warehouse for mail and sorting, mail sorting and distribution. So given the history of the post office's location in downtown White Bear Lake, convenience for retail services for residents, visitors, and local businesses, and the economic benefit of its location in downtown, staff has prepared a letter of opposition to the potential relocation for the city council to consider. Their draft letter is in your packet. It kind of goes over what I just said, but then it says at the end, "The city opposes the relocation of retail services and respectfully requests the post office team partner with the city to find other viable solutions which jointly meet the needs of our community and United States Postal Service." So that is what is in the council's packet for consideration. I will note, since drafting this letter, I have finally been able to be in touch with someone at the post office who was on the real estate side for the federal government. And I've been authorized by them to share that they are considering a space within one block of US Bank. But I'm not, I don't believe that that would include the warehouse portion. I think that would be a positive, that would be only retail. So there's a chance that there could be two post office locations in downtown, one being the warehouse portion only, and then one being retail. So that's what, that's what I know since drafting this. I do still, with that information, I do still recommend the council adopt the resolution authorizing the letter and seeing if there are ways that we can partner with them to learn and understand potential ramifications with relocation or what it means to existing businesses or tenants. Thank you.
So I just want to clarify, so I think, I want to clarify my understanding, which is, the working proposal is the post office is considering vacating retail, but the building itself will still be owned by the US Postal Service, and it'll operate solely as a warehouse distribution center. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So in terms of what messaging we send to the post office... So in terms of what messaging we send to the post office, whether we oppose it, to me, there's one terrible worst-case scenario, and that's remove retail but still just have a fulfillment center in what is prime real estate downtown White Bear. So I'm fine opposing the removal of retail as a, that's better than what the current proposal is. I personally wouldn't die on that hill if the US Postal Service wanted to divest their position in the property and open up a huge space for different development. So in terms of what's before us, I support that. I think we've received a lot of emails and input from the community that that is an asset and a benefit having retail right downtown White Bear. So I think we should fight for that, for however far it gets us. I think, as I said at the last council meeting, I don't want to, I don't want us to overplay what our hand is in the ability to influence federal government, but if we don't write a letter and try, we for sure won't get the resolution that we're looking for. So for city staff that maybe is engaging in a dialogue beyond just a letter, I would be open to, if retail has to leave, then the whole post office at that location leaves in its entirety, and then at least we have an opportunity for redevelopment in downtown White Bear. That could provide some pretty cool, some pretty cool options. But failing that, I'd like retail to stay. That's where I stand on that. Council thoughts or what we'd like to do? Councilmember West.
I support the letter, and just a quick note that in the letter, the email is incorrect, so I would just recommend, if we accept it, that it's corrected.
Councilmember Edberg.
Multiple minds, thank you, Mayor. So at this table, multiple folks have, we have had our caveats about federal activity, federal expense, the volume of federal taxes, et cetera, et cetera. And so for us to oppose efforts at efficiency, just because our ox is gored, but they're trying to relocate, get better, greater efficiency for their larger operations, I just want to call out that for us to oppose without addressing the underlying, how do they do their job better and be more efficient at government? That's a conundrum, and we try and do that in our own operations. So I'm of mixed mind on how to message that. I think that requires more nuanced messaging than a straight-out opposition. I think the retention, so the conversation has been, we want to retain the convenience and the reason downtown, for people to come downtown, okay? That's, and so a retail location in downtown White Bear, I think that makes sense as a strategy for a vital downtown. And I'm of mixed mind on whether or not, what to include. So I don't know that, Mayor, your preference is exactly where the council sits and where the community sits in terms of redevelopment and so forth. I'm not sure we'd want to lead with that. But to call for an engagement in conversation to help to, for our city to engage more directly in trying to find solutions, yeah, I think we should send a letter. I think we should invite that. But I'm troubled by us purely saying, go gore somebody else's ox. So it's, it's not clear.
Any other thoughts on this? Okay, we have a resolution before us authorizing this ending of the letter as written.
Move to approve.
Do I have a second? Any further discussion on this? Councilmember Edberg.
So when we talked about, city manager, when you talk about overwhelming feedback, since most of our topics do not draw any feedback, is overwhelming five, 10, 100, 1,000? Get us, get my head in the right ballpark.
Mayor, Councilmember Edberg, our staff does a phenomenal job at handling frontline communications, and this is one that I would say, I shouldn't, I think that almost exclusively came to me. So to me, for me to be receiving, I would say probably a dozen between emails or phone calls was a lot for me to receive on this topic in addition to reading letters to the editor, hearing conversations around town and from, you know, some on council sharing feedback that they had received from the public. So for me, it was quite a bit of feedback.
Fair enough. I'm not quite sure that constitutes overwhelming, but I do, it's significant, it's, so again, nuance. I'm not going to edit your letter, but in our conversations, 12 people talking about something is less than we, less feedback than we get in some of our hearings on a variety of topics. So it's like how we interpret that and what meaning we put is a nuance.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The resolution is passed. Thank you, Ms. Crawford. Item nine, discussion, we have nothing scheduled. Item 10, communications from the city manager. Ms. Crawford, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mayor. This Saturday, the 13th, at 11:30 AM is a triad summer picnic at Podman Park. Anyone is welcome to attend that. I think the mayor and council received an invite for that. I will be there. I know police and fire will also be there. And then on Saturday, September 20th, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, the White Bear Area Chamber of Commerce is conducting their 35th Annual Adopt-a-Highway Cleanup. They have the one-mile stretch along Highway 61. It is also World Cleanup Day, so if anyone's interested, please meet at the chamber office. I'll be there doing that, too. They'll have reflective vests, trash bags, litter pickers, gloves, et cetera, and then of course just wear appropriate clothing. So that's what I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford. Council, any questions for our city manager? Seeing none, all right. All right, item 11, closed session. To consider an offer to purchase real property located at 2224 County Road E. I have a memorandum in front of me that I'm going to read, and as I'm doing that, our two guests in the audience, we eventually will be closing the session. All right, we are now, we now need to go into closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 13D.05 subdivision 3C3, which authorizes the council to develop or consider offers or counteroffers for the purchase or sale of real or personal property. The address to property, of the property to consider an offer for purchase is 2224 County Road E. Therefore, I request a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 13D.05 subdivision 3C3 to discuss the above described matters. Do I have that motion?
No move.
Do I have a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we are now in closed session.